Practice.
I I use it in your in your absence.
Wielded wielded that with authority, didn't you?
Will everybody turn their microphones on, please?
It's fun.
Okay, I call to order the October ninth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Daryl here, Eric here.
Amanda here.
Lynn here.
Jeff here.
Michael here.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the regular agenda. Does anybody have any amendments or deletions for tonight? Nothing? May I have a motion, please?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Has everybody had time to peruse them? Are there any? Things anybody has to say? No? May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the minutes. Number twenty fifth as presented.
I second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Amanda. All in favor?
Oh, can I say something? In the staff report, the update that that we were given for the minor DRV permit where the changes were made, I think we all talked about it last meeting. I thought that was very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, may I have a motion to approve?
We did.
We have the motion. May I have a roll call? Or may I have a vote?
Aye.
Thank you. You threw me there, Michael.
Sorry, no good.
I've never had somebody stop me in the middle of that. Always at first.
Michael's good for first.
Public comment. Anybody's anybody in the audience? We have no audience. Madison, is there anybody?
None on my.
So we will close public comment.
Declaration to conflicts of interest, please. Declaration of conflicts of interest.
None.
Once again, um.
None.
It's not in here, is it? Oh, yes, it is. There it is. I skipped. I see what you're saying. Okay, nobody has any conflicts of interest? Special presentations? I assume we have none? Design review and land use public hearings?
None.
None? 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 That's interesting tonight. We've been pretty much on a roll with that. Discussion direction items. Mentor turn forward, chapter sixteen code update draft article twelve environmental impact report.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So with us tonight, as usual, is Matt Farah. Matt and we have been working on this article, environmental impact report. But you've had a chance to read through this draft. So I'm not gonna talk too much about this. I think we should just get into it. Matt has prepared a really great memo that highlights our review of that in the changes made of our existing environmental impact report section. So we're prepared to talk about it. Matt, are you out there?
I am here. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Um, so yeah, let's go ahead and just jump right in. This is a a pretty short section, so hopefully we can get it get through it pretty efficiently this evening. Um, I'm just gonna walk through the memo that was included in your packet, and it highlights some of the key changes that were made. And if you have any questions or comments, feel free to interrupt me and um we can address those as we as we kind of go through this. So first, the really the the most substantial change to this um this article or these this section of the code is changing who's responsible for requiring a preliminary environmental assessment and and then subsequently an environmental impact report. And and I'll just walk up quickly. You you guys may already know this, um but but if you don't, the way the town's environmental impact report process works is when you submit, when somebody submits an application, there's a checklist of items that's called the preliminary environmental assessment that they have to go through and say, yes, my project will, will not, or could possibly affect various attributes of the town, like will it impact wildlife habitat? Will it uh proposed buildings that aren't in uh scale with the buildings around it, things like that. And the and there's um a whole checklist that I that I won't go through, but um that has to be submitted until based on an evaluation of that assessment, then it's determined whether or not uh a more detailed environmental impact report is required that really that then an applicant would have to go out and hire different professionals to to prepare studies and data um that that all get compiled into an environmental impact report. And and what's in the environmental impact report really depends on what the findings of the the preliminary environmental assessment is. So hopefully that made some sense. Um, the way the code is structured right now is that somebody comes in, they submit an application. The application gets reviewed by staff and referral agencies. And then assuming it's everything's all good, then it gets forwarded on to the planning commission and then town council, depending on the type of review um for review. And at the planning commission level, the planning commission determines whether or not an environment, this preliminary environmental assessment's required. And then subsequently, they determine whether or not an environmental impact report is required. So the way the code's structured now is an application submitted, and then once it gets to the planning commission level, then there's this uh authority delegated to the planning commission to as to whether or not to require the first and or second step of of the environmental impact report process. So that, as we've discussed previously, that that creates a number of different challenges um from a from a review process standpoint. Uh, it also has planning commission getting involved with submittal requirements for applications, which is generally never doesn't, I shouldn't say never, but it it typically doesn't happen. Typically, code say, here's your submittal requirements applicant, you need to submit these things. Um, and that's kind of all handled at the staff level, or it's spelled out in the code. And so the what we're proposing is that instead of the planning commission being responsible for determining whether a preliminary environmental assessment or a environmental impact reported required, that happens that that authority is delegated to the planning director. So when somebody submits their application, they submit this checklist, our preliminary environmental assessment as part of their application, the planning director looks it over and says, okay, you said you you will impact A, B, C, and D. And so you need to submit an environmental impact report that addresses those items. And then the applicant has to go back out, prepare that environmental impact report and submit that to the town, and that all has to occur before the application can be deemed complete. And the determination of completeness on an application is is a key step because until that happens, an application will not be scheduled for a review by the planning commission or town council. So it it really holds an app, it keeps the applicant on the hook to get these items addressed before their application gets into the the sort of official review process. Um, so that's that's really a critical change. Um, the most substantial change that we're proposing to this is part of the code. Um, I I do want to note that this doesn't prohibit the planning commission or town council from requesting further information if they deem that necessary for a a proper review of an application. And that could mean additional information as part of the environmental impact report or or other information that maybe isn't related to an environmental impact report. So that is still an option for the planning commission and town council. Scott or Madison, did I miss anything? Any key?
No.
Items related to that change?
No, I think you summed it up quite well.
Okay. So I will, I will pause there, um, because that's really the the most substantial change. Are there any questions or comments from the planning commission?
Uh, I have a question. I think would probably be in the next part, which is in the sixteen dash twelve dash twenty, number two, when it's talking about the wetlands.
Mm hmm.
Does this also include language about fins? Because fins are over there in Malloy Park, and they're a pretty serious thing to deal with.
So, uh, Matt, I can, I can address that just because I'm looking at the language that is being proposed. Um, so within the draft, um, code section under number two, it says directly or indirectly affect high priority wildlife habitat and or environmentally sensitive areas. And it says, e.g., wetlands. So, for example, wetlands, it could then include fins or other environmentally sensitive areas.
So that can include fins? Well, then, if that's the case, we should also, in the definitions, define what is a fins.
I was just gonna say, I have no idea.
What a fin is.
It's like a fish.
Yeah.
It's a tail on a fish.
I'm like, baby.
I think I remember what a fin is from my classes in college.
Yeah, fins have a whole lot of impact on on what's going on.
What's a fin?
A fin, fin is in the wetlands of the soil and the and all the levels over a hundred years of of composition, decomposition, all that stuff that's within in there, and it takes hundreds of years to develop. So to destroy a fin or to move a fin, you're really affecting the wetlands.
So I guess the question might be, does our do we need to say including but not limited to wetlands, fins, rock outcroppings?
Yes.
Wildlife habitat, something like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
I know the water and sanitation district has had a lot of problems with fins, especially on various projects that they had. They had to actually abandon them because they didn't even have authority to move or even touch fins.
Because they're so protected.
Yeah, they're very protected.
I have a secondary question. Two parts. One regards to Daryl's fins. If we're if we're including fins, does that apply, or is there a different deal that we just worked out with Graves area, or 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 are fins included up there as well? Question mark.
For for what here?
For for the potential new developments south of Bolts Lake. Is there a different code for up there, a different deal that we made, or can fins be?
This would apply to everything that comes through the process.
Okay, then the only other part in the same section that Daryl was talking about, whether proposed where it says above number one, whether a proposed development development will or will not. Should it be, uh, I mean, it's up to you guys, the ones that figure that out before it comes to us, but should it say project? Or development?
Where are you looking, Michael? Please.
Where is it? It's on page twelve of the draft, the top, the top sentence. Assessment must include a statement of whether a proposed development will or will not affect Minter's environment each of the following ways. It talks just about development and not a project. I don't know specifically how brave that is, but I would think that we're talking about.
So we we define development already in the code and and that pretty much includes everything in the kitchen sink.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Um, so we've we've felt like that was, you know, uh, comprehensive enough. It's it's one term that includes pretty much everything.
So it could be just one project or whatever?
Could be a a building, a fence, uh, something that gets erected.
So development is a broad term.
It is a very broad term.
All right, thank you.
That's a good catch, though.
Thank you.
Where is it defined? Because in the very front it is not. Is it in chapter seventeen perhaps?
It's in chapter, article two of chapter sixteen.
Article two of sixteen.
Our existing definitions define development.
And and like, so as I'm sure you caught with my summary presented to you for all of the definitions, that was across sixteen sections. It's extremely hard for anybody to figure out what actually applies when definitions are strewn across sixteen sections. So at the end of this, we will have one section for definitions. It will not be at the beginning, individual article in one section.
So the so the term development in that statement, we're gonna expand exactly what that definition is in 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 that area?
No.
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 I thought you said we're consolidating.
Well, we are. We're consolidating the whole of the definitions into one section. But the definition for development, I'm sure we'll take a look at it and see if it needs to be changed. It's already extremely broad.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
The definition just isn't going to live in article twelve with the environmental impact report. It's going to live in its own article of definitions.
The other thing to
Article definitions, all of them.
The other thing to um just keep in mind is under number one, purpose, is it page eleven? We kind of define it there for the purpose of this article. Development, which includes land use change, zone change, or subdivision that encompasses three different major land use application types.
I'm sorry, Scott, where's that?
Uh, on page eleven of your packet.
Yeah, I got page eleven right here in the under B or C?
A one.
A one?
Yep.
I'm sure any proposed development. So basically, you're considering the development potentially could be a house is what you're explaining to me.
Yeah. Land use change, zone change.
Any change of use, any change of. So you don't want to add the word project slash development?
Well, anyway, I mean, if you're turning in an application for something or you're doing something different.
So then let's use the bike truck as an example. That was a project, or was that considered an development?
Correct. It's a change of land use.
Okay.
Building a chicken coop could be.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's doesn't mean it's a big.
Yeah, foul.
I first read that, I'm foul in there.
Oh, no.
Oh, foul.
Michael, I appreciate you making this distinction because I don't, I hope it's not our intent to go through a preliminary environmental assessment for a shed or something else that might be deemed a project. I don't think we define project in our code.
I I I I would leave that up to 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 your judgment. I just thought that it was a little vague.
Okay.
And 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 that's why I was only recommending the because what we had in gazillions of years of midterm stuff, everybody says nothing's defined, can be interpreted different ways. And that's the only reason that I probably should add another word.
Okay.
Lynn? Oh, yes, I have something. Under designating authority to planning director. Where it talks about whether or not it needs an environmental study kind of leaves it up to you, and then it proceeds to say that planning commissioner council could ask for additional information. But that's only if you decide. What if somebody says, well, I really think we should do that? Is that still a possibility?
You mean if the
Somebody on council or somebody on commission says, well, we know you didn't request one, but we think we should.
Yeah, I think that's what Matt was trying to convey is that
Yeah.
Because I didn't read that.
For that.
I read additional information if you applied one, but I didn't.
There's no call up language like in pre in the earlier like chapters we reviewed, like if planning commission or council wants to call up the decision not to and question it, which would then trigger them to ask for one, I think.
We love doing it.
Yeah, that's what's supposed to be said, knows.
That's what it says. I mean, seeing that basically if if there was a study done and the study wasn't sufficient for us or council, they could say, well, we can ask for more. Or if the planning director decides that they don't need an environmental study done, and we decided that we think that there should be one done, we can ask for one.
So that refers to both, because it says
We have the power.
The planning commission, town council determines an environmental impact report has insufficient information, they can request additional. But I didn't see anywhere in here it said that they could call up and ask for one.
I think that we have the power to.
Okay.
I think that
If you're comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with it.
To clarify, there there is no language, specific language to to what you guys are talking about in this draft of article twelve. There's nothing in here that specifically says if the planning commission or town council determines that an environmental impact report has insufficient information, they can they can request that. It's I I it may be in another section of the code. I I don't know off the top of my head, but it's fairly common that when a planning commissioner town council is reviewing an application, they can they can always require an applicant to submit additional information, whether that's related to an environmental impact report or not. Uh, really kind of whatever information they think is necessary for a a a proper review of the application. So it's not, there's nothing specifically in this draft of article twelve that that addresses that. Um, but I I think there may be language elsewhere. And if if there's not, we can certainly include it that says really any time a planning commissioner council is reviewing application, they they have the ability to request additional information.
In regards to that, Matt, I I I think having that somewhere just in general somewhere, because a lot of times, a lot of times in, you know, sometimes it happens in midterm, if it's interpreted a different way, you know, with heavy hitters, and then we're in litigation again, and then they say, well, planning commission called it up, but they didn't have the authority to call it up. So I just think that we should, I I
Amanda thinks it's in there somewhere.
Like, I think we defined it in the steps, Matt. Um, I think it was under like, I feel like it was under step ten with the reconsideration by planning commission town council, but it's somewhere in that first general provisions.
As long as it's in there, Matt.
I'm great.
Matt's pretty good at reading.
Say that out loud.
Okay. Sorry, Matt, you took off.
No, thank you.
All right, moving on.
So are there any any questions or or comments related to changing who's responsible for more or less changing the responsibility from the planning commission to the planning director for a preliminary environmental assessment and then an environmental impact report?
No.
Okay?
Okay.
Um, next item, the existing code has some language that uh tried to address how costs and fees associated with an environmental impact report are addressed. Um, in in talking with Scott and Madison, we felt that the the town has a fee schedule that's that's specific and and addresses costs and fees associated with any sort of application review. So in order to to reduce redundancy and and also potential for inconsistency between language and the code, um, that that whole section about costs and fees was removed. Um, that said, it is, it's still addressed with the town's fee schedule.
Anybody any questions? No? Go ahead, please.
All right. Uh, section sixteen, twelve, twenty, the environmental assessment. So the language for the the various items that are listed um that somebody, an applicant has to address in their preliminary environmental assessment checklist have the language been has been tweaked um to hopefully make it it more understandable and clarify what exactly uh each item is referring to. Um, and specifically, the changes that were made to that list of items for an envi- our preliminary environmental assessment are as follows. Uh, number two was modified to include environmental environmentally sensitive areas um like wetlands, and and we'll we'll make sure fins is added in there. Uh, the existing code just refers to wildlife habitat. So, um, we thought it was important that that because I don't think there's anywhere else in this list that talks about areas like wetlands and things like that. So we thought it was important to to capture that in this list. Um, so that's been added. Uh, number seven is a new item that was added to the list, and that addresses sites that might be contaminated by historic or current use on the property, like a dry cleaner, uh, an old gas station. Uh, I mean, there's places, communities where they have issues where properties become contaminated because somebody's making meth, things like that. So, um.
Perhaps.
Yeah, mind tearing. So it's probably a more relevant example than midterm, hopefully. So so, yeah, we we thought, again, that was something that was important for somebody to think about with their project, and and if there is potential for contamination, that that further information on that might be necessary. Number eleven was modified. The existing code refers to odors that are harmful, or I'm sorry, odors that are objectionable or damaging. We changed that to refer to odors that are harmful to the rights of others to enjoy their property. Uh, the reason for this change or this recommended change is we had concerns about the term objectionable odor. Um, that seems pretty subjective and and could present some challenges to both the applicant and staff to say, well, you know, somebody may like a certain smell and somebody else may find it objectionable. So how do we? How do we know? It it just leaves a lot of ambiguity around what what type of odors we're talking about. And hopefully harmful to the rights of others is is more um objective. I think it's still, there's probably still some opportunity there for interpretation, but uh, if there's any suggestions on how that language could be clarified, certainly open hearing those.
Harmful to the rights of others sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Anybody?
Is my Richard, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, like, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Okay, does anybody have anything? No?
All right. Uh, number fifteen, which addresses noise. Previously, it it referred to noise that may be offensive or damaging. Uh, again, we had concerns about the term offensive. Again, that that we thought that was a bit subjective and and could be problematic uh in in trying to administer that. We changed it to say noise that exceeds the town standard. That way, it it's pretty clear that if you're proposing a development that'll uh produce noise that exceeds the town standards, there there may be some further information that you need to provide.
So just for reference, the town has a noise ordnance and decibel levels at different times of day. So those are the standards that we need to
Where are they?
Do you know where in the code those are?
We're gonna refer, like, have a referencing back to those standards, or are we gonna use it as part of the article definition article?
I think there's a reference. He's referencing that section.
Sixteen eighteen thirty.
Yeah, there's a there's a placeholder in the draft of article twelve. It says section section sixteen dash pound sign, pound sign. So it's, yeah, there'll be a reference in the code when we we figure out where that that's those standards will live.
Um, I have a question with noise. Is that referring to permanent situation or temporary? Like temporary construction noise?
It's probably needs to refer, and I think that could be a good clar- uh clarifying language. It it really, in my mind, is is supposed to refer to permanent noise. If you're out there banging a hammer on occasion, it it shouldn't apply. And I actually think, I don't know if the town standards have exemptions, but I've seen seen places where they say construction activity, things like that are are exempt from noise standards. I I mean, airports, not that Mintern has an airport, but um, things like that where there's there's specific types of activities that are exempt from noise standards. But we could, we could certainly add in here that says generates permanent noise, something along those lines, if if that makes sense.
Uh, that makes sense, um, because you do have a lot of construction, you know, tractors, trucks, and all that kind of stuff. So th- that's just temporary stuff. A permanent thing is what really irritates everybody.
So that might be part of that, you know, um, description. It's, you know, other than temporary.
Then do you leave temporary open too?
We, we could.
I suppose certain things then would have to go through the decimals and things like that.
Yeah, they're subjects.
Yeah, subject.
I think, Matt, I think what, you know, Amanda and everybody's talking about where we're referring to these sections. Apparently like we have them all over the place at this point. When the code gets rewritten, I I would think that we'll have like a certain section that we can just look in that section for any whatever dash whatever things, correct? Is that the plan? Or, or will the definitions be at the end of each section?
No.
Reference, it'll be in a separate section.
Def- definitions will be in their own section. Um, the, the town's noise standards.
I was just talking about the referrals, the other, the earlier.
Oh.
Things like to where it says see whatever it says.
Oh, right. So if that's referring to see the noise.
No, not the noise thing. I'm talking about the other stuff that Amanda was mentioning earlier. In regards to referring back to the, what was it, Amanda?
Well, it's referring back to the noise standards, but I think what you're trying to indicate is like, will we have like, we're gonna have the references directly linked? Yeah, but then would we also have, is it like, it's gonna be like, we have our definitions article, we also have our like standards article, like, is that what you're?
Yeah.
Seeing is like, are we gonna come aggregate all those standards?
That way it's easy to find if somebody's looking, reading the section that says, look at, because even this is a little confusing because it says, look at this, but look at this is like twenty days late.
We, we've tried really hard to not send people all over the codes. But there's some places where it's going to be unavoidable unless we want to include the town's noise standard here, which it really doesn't belong. So we're gonna, yeah, we, we've tried to make this kind of one stop shopping for the most part, but we're gonna, we're gonna have those instances where we have to send people to a different section.
It, I, I would say to that point, I, I mean, we've talked about consolidating all the definitions into a single section. I would also recommend, um, a- and I think it's in the, the code audit where we said that we would try to consolidate standards in, into, there may be a few sections where there's different types of standards, but um, trying to consolidate standards in, into single, into, into fewer sections as, as, as few sections as possible, I think is is the goal. So again, it's, you kind of, if you do have to jump around in the code, it's not, you're not jumping to twenty different places. It's just you go to one, another set, one other section and you hopefully find what you need.
Yeah, like if we're, if you're looking at the environmental, like the stuff we're talking about right now, y- you know, may, and you know, it might be there, but it, you know, s- somewhere at the end of environmental, whatever's referred to in certain thing, I don't know, which I'm just saying, we want to be able to find it somewhere.
Well, and I just, I'm sorry, I don't mean to jump in.
Okay, I'm sorry, I jumped in.
Anybody else?
I mean, I have questions on this whole section.
Okay. I just was saying, I was just looking in the definitions. We have temporary use, we have temporary this, we have temporary that. Should we do a definition for temporary? Was I getting too far into it?
That's getting too, too deep.
Okay.
Something along through the other codes is, is rather than trying to have a, a soul, a whole, you know, Webster dictionary attached to your code.
That would be good.
Yeah, you, you can define key terms and then for terms like temporary and things like that, you can include a statement that says, you know, that these sorts of common language terms, um, we rely on sort of this, the, the common definition. That's, that this is just off the top of my head language, but something like that where any sort of commonly used terms that everyday language that folks use that, that we just rely on, uh, yeah, the common definition for those.
Okay. Number seventeen?
Yep. So number seventeen, um, right now the code states by preempting a site that is desirable for recreational uses or planned open space. When we looked at this, we had concerns about sort of that being an arbitrary item, um, because they could say, well, eh, somebody could say, well, you know, I'd love to use my neighbor's property for a, a bike park and um, so doesn't it, don't they need to address that in their preliminary environmental assessment? Um, so we changed that to say alter a site that is identified in a plan adopted by the town as desirable for recreational purposes or open space. So hopefully that's a, a bit more objection, uh, has more, um, i- is more objective than saying someplace that's desirable for recreation or open space.
We're, I don't want us to get sued. I read that and I was like, oh my gosh, we're gonna get sued if we exercise that provision.
Uh, number, number nineteen is a new item that was added uh, to address potential fiscal impacts from a proposed development on the town. Uh, and, and the reason that was added under the environmental impact report requirement, there's a, an item that that addresses fiscal impact to the town. So uh, it, it made sense in my mind to add that is, that is a, a item for the, the preliminary environmental assessment checklist. I, I know Scott and Madison and I maybe need to have some further discussion on that. Um, maybe it's appropriate to talk about that tonight. Uh, and then number twenty, um, is a new item as well that addresses potential impacts from a proposed development on other public service providers and uh, that means other than the town. So the school district, fire district, et cetera.
Does, does this say that they have a say in it or do they get a review of it or? I, I don't understand.
Uh, what this is saying is if you're proposing a development and you, you're required to do this, this preliminary environmental assessment checklist. And you say, my project is gonna increase the demand on the school district. Then the town planner or the planning director has the discretion to say, you need to, as part of your environmental impact report for your project or your development, you need to submit additional information about what exactly those impacts are gonna be and what sort of um, mitigation efforts you're gonna take to offset those impacts. Um, so it's, it's not saying that the school district gets to chime in. I, you know, the planning director, the town planner does have the ability to refer an environmental impact report to the school district and say, do you have any comments on this? But it's, uh, then I think it's still at the town's discretion whether or not, or how they want to require a, an applicant to address comments from the school district.
Hey, Matt, I've got a question for you and it goes back to your days at the town of Eagle.
Yep.
I think when we were going through the initial draft of this, um, you mentioned that the town has a development impact report rather than an environmental impact report.
Correct.
And just, you know, I'm, I'm kind of wondering if, you know, this kind of fiscal impact belongs in an environmental impact assessment.
Um, sure.
But if it, if this section were a development impact report and it was, you know, it includes environmental concerns, um, concerns with regard to impacts on public service or infrastructure or things like that, it's more encompassing. What do you think of that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think there might, there's, there may be a need for just some discussion about what are we trying to achieve with this? This section of the code, is it really focused more on environment or is it broader? And in the existing code, and actually in this draft of article twelve, we, we define environment as, um, it's not just the natural environment. It includes, I'm trying to find it here. Um, it includes natural, cultural, social and economic attributes of the town. So technically when we refer to environment under this section, it's, it's, it encompasses more than the natural environment. So I, I think, you know, maybe we need some discussion around, should it, should it be all encompassing like that? Or, or should it, maybe we, we tone it down and focus it more, really have it focus more on the natural environment.
Are you saying like rename this section instead of environmental development? I think that sounds like an, I like that idea. Because then we don't necessarily have to scope it down.
Right.
Include other items outside of the natural environment, if you call it developmental.
Yeah.
If that's what you're, I think that's what you're saying.
It is.
Just rename this section.
Because the intent is good. We're, we're improving this section, but we're not changing the original intent, which is more broad.
Right.
Yeah, rather than have to explain it to an applicant that it's not just the natural environment, it's all these other things if it's labeled as such, then you say, oh, well, you know, and it sounds Matt like ultimately what we want to make the process more transparent and streamlined at the same time is that we want the planning director to have the authority to determine on the front end before it ever comes to planning, whether or not a development needs a natural environmental study or a fiscal impact study or a whatever, traffic study, et cetera. All of the impacts that are being considered based on the criteria of the questionnaire.
Right.
The answers that come back on the questionnaire are the first line of defense for the planning director and the plan department staff to determine whether or not something needs to go down which avenue and have more consultants or, you know, the applicant needs to spend more money to have further studies done.
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
I have a question. If it's so comprehensive though, are we losing the importance of some of these things that we would be, like we need environment, but there's thirty other things in here. Are we losing those kind of investigations? The importance of everything in here, that there's so much?
I think it, I think it really matters what your answer as an applicant are on your questionnaire. Yeah, so if you answer, I mean, I'm gonna get to this later, I guess, when we have questions, but as your, your answer on the questionnaire and the questions that are being, that are on the questionnaire being the important thing first is, um, a certain, you know, a certain amount of discretion needs to be taken by the planning department to determine whether or not a project needs certain experts to chime in, right? And I think sometimes it's obvious and my, my problem comes where it's gray. Like where a, a project maybe, we don't want to overlook something that needs to be looked at harder.
That's what I'm trying to say. Like there's so much in here, are we overlooking some things because this one has more precedent over this? So
I don't think so. They're not weighted. I think it's a yes or no kind of answer as you go down the list of twenty-one potential items. Uh, or areas of impact. Will or will not, could possibly. So, you know, if there's a could possibly, I think that's where I or Madison or somebody from staff would have that conversation with um, first ourselves, including the town attorney, um, the town engineer, anybody else that we want to pull into that. To say what, how do, how do we make a judgment call here and then s- meet with the applicant, right? Um, but I think I understand your question and your concern here. I mean.
I'm just saying, I mean, if really.
Are you diluting the response?
Are you diluting like, like? Because I mean, wildlife is really important, but we're really looking at something else because that it has more importance. Where this thing is actually situated, are we just going to not really focus on wildlife that's in that area and stuff like that because we're focused on something else is well, so here's, everything has its equal weight and stuff, but it seems like some things would take less than other stuff.
Here's a scenario that could play out. Let's say we decide upon initial application and review of that application for completeness that we agree with the applicant if the answer will not impact wildlife and we say, yeah, okay, we, we agree with that. And then we get through the completeness process and we send this out for referral. And they might have an environmental impact report or a development impact report that touches wetlands and um, odors and five other items, but there's this gaping hole for wildlife and it goes to Colorado Parks and Wildlife for their official referral and they come back and say, there's a gaping hole here. This is a elk winter concentration area. What were you thinking?
Yeah.
Um, um, at that point, I think, you know, we're, we're in a process, but that would, it would suck, but we would go back to the applicant to say, you need to update your environmental impact report and address this.
And we can still do that even though it's almost to the phase where it's not.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I like your example. Your example's good. Which, you, you know me, I bounce backwards sometimes. Uh, that, that's a great example. And like we talked about earlier, like you said, that we, you know, if somebody comes up and somebody like Daryl calls it up because we're, we're not protecting the fens, right? We, we, we made all these people go through all this and if they have a lot of money, we want to make sure that somewhere it says the commission or council could call it up because otherwise we're gonna get, we're gonna have a problem.
Well, it states that.
Well, I have to say.
Can do that.
We want to make sure we keep it so somebody can see it.
Yes.
We don't want it i- in the back somewhere.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah.
We don't want someone going through a big huge project and then somebody says, oh, well, like you said, or the, or some, you know, it's, it's a lot easier if it's coming from divisional wildlife. But, but if it's coming from one of us after somebody's four hundred grand in.
Yeah.
That's only my, that's my only suggestion. Claire, I, I like clarity.
So you're saying we should have a caveat on the bottom of every correspondence we send to an applicant that says.
No, I think on the application, on the application, you might want to caveat it somewhere.
Well, I guess the good news is, um,
We don't have any.
Those, I, I think those provisions and that ability for planning commission and or council is already in the code. It will be in this version of the code. I hear what you're saying though is, you know, in, in this section, we, we may need to be specific to say.
This is a heavy hitting section that could apply to, to some stuff coming up.
Right.
You should just, I mean, because each of these articles have the general provisions section. So actually just reference over to that top level general provisions, which actually states that call up clause. Do you, do you mean, because it's like, and I know we didn't have any changes to the general provisions.
Yeah.
That's would seem more logical than putting it in that.
Good idea, Amanda.
Well, I think it's, what we're talking about too, Matt, is that at least in my head is the chronology of what the process is, what we're trying to lay out here and making sure that, you know, some of the conversation that we're having here is, to me, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around that everybody's understanding the timing of, of this and would, if we're talking about something that's, we're calling up something, that's already months after the applications come in. It's already been deemed complete. It's already in the public review process. I'm talking about the, you know, we're focused, I feel like we're focused right now on the deeming of the application as being complete. And it's the very beginning of when the application comes in and making sure that the staff is, and specifically the planning director has the tools by which to make the right decisions to decide whether or not an app, you know, if, if the, if the planning direct, the questionnaire goes out, the, the answers come back on the application, it gets reviewed and then the planning director decides, okay, this, I think this needs to have a, a environmental, you know, a natural environmental report, needs to have a fiscal impact report, needs to have the schools report, needs to have all these reports or it looks like every, looks like this isn't gonna impact much, doesn't need anything. Okay. It's ready, it can go to the public review process and then all of a sudden it comes to us and we go, wait a minute. Why didn't this need this? Why didn't this need that? To your point, you were like, why doesn't the, why doesn't this one project need a traffic study? Okay, well, those are, that's, that's months down the road and to your point, you don't want to get sued.
Yeah.
Because, well, you didn't tell me eight months ago that I needed. You said my application was complete. Well, obviously, you know, we're trying to avoid that, but, um.
So would we have it like a trigger, like so obviously this is gonna be on planning director, it'll be on the, our report, the, you know, staff report. So would we have it like a trigger, like, so obviously this is gonna be on planning director, it'll be on the, our report, the, you know, staff report. Um, to say, hey, we have this preliminary assessment, we only deemed these categories
Right.
as triggers that we need a more, more detailed impact assessment for these specific.
Yeah, not to paint like some weird scenario, but obviously if the the, when the applicant fills out the application, if they don't answer the questions honestly.
Yeah, that's, that's my, that was my, I got a lot of questions.
You know, you're relying on someone to fill out the application and answer the questions to the best of their ability. They may not be experts in half of the questions that they asked. They might not know what Jimmy Buffett fans are.
Exactly.
But does, you know, it's, if, if the questions, that's, that's my concern. Is that, is there a situation, and I don't know where it would happen, but if they answer, if they kinda look at it and they're like, hmm, I don't think so. Think, I think I'm good. And then somehow it slips through. I doubt that it's gonna make it so far that no red flags are gonna go up. As long as there's, to your point, provisions that say, you know, sorry.
All we need is provision.
Didn't, didn't get caught, but now somebody at the council level, eight months later, a year later.
Build like eight hundred or.
Decides.
Million dollars going into environmental studies and one of us gone, wait, and it not being anywhere.
Jeff, I, I hear your concern, um, and I wouldn't even say that'd be an extreme example, right? But I think the ultimate fail safe here is the ability and the authority of the town council primarily. Um, they, a completeness determination does not guarantee approval and it does not, right? Um, and if they are, or you, as a planning commission, making a recommendation faced with making a, uh, fact, a finding of fact, so you're looking at standards and you're approving a new uh, conditional use permit or PUD or whatever it is. Um, if you look at the information in front of you, a report that doesn't include things that you think are important to make that finding of fact, then you don't have to approve it. Or you could say, we can't make this determination as a planning commission without additional information.
Right.
You can table yourself and go back and provide that information and those are, that, that part of our system isn't gonna change. Um, but I, I.
And I don't think, I've been here long enough to know that I don't think that there's anything that can get through all of our processes. Without, if it, if it's, if it's got some stink to it, it's gonna come out somewhere and somebody's gonna throw a flag. And they're gonna say, you know what, I don't buy it, that it's not gonna impact the elk or it's not gonna impact the traffic or it's not gonna impact us economically or it's not gonna impact something and it, it's just, there's no way that it's gonna slide all the way through without the town throwing a flag.
And it's also, I think, important that, you know, impact, an environmental impact or a preliminary assessment or an impact report is in addition to other information that you're gonna have in front of you to make decisions. So.
Yeah. So.
So, I have a couple of responses to some of the comments that have been, been noted. Um, so I think related to what was just being said, the, the town planner does have the, in here it says that the planner can refer a preliminary environmental assessment to referral agencies or other professionals or other experts if they say, you know, this person is saying that their project's not gonna impact wetlands and I, and I really don't think they're being honest. They can refer it to a, a wetlands person and say, what do you think? Or parks and wildlife and say, do you think this is gonna impact wildlife habitat? So there's that ability for the planning director to, I, I mean, you have that level of review at the, the planning director's gonna look at this and kinda give it the, the smell test and say, this, yeah, this, this doesn't, you're saying you're not gonna impact wildlife and I know for a fact there's critical deer habitat here, things like that. So there's that, that kinda level of review and then the planning director could also send it out to the other experts and say, you know, I'm not quite clear about this, can you weigh in on this? Um, so, and that's at the preliminary assessment level. And then if, if you have to go to that greater level of detail and do studies and, and pull together this im- impact report, again, there's still another opportunity for the planning director to look at that information, referral agencies, and then ultimately planning commission and council. So there's, I, I think there's a fair amount of checks. Um, I, I certainly do think there's opportunities and I know work, when I worked for the town of Eagle, we had a similar process and uh, yeah, not every, everybody who comes in the door is, is either honest or they, they don't know enough and, and maybe put something down unintentionally that, that isn't correct, so. Um, I, I think having that, those checks in there is certainly important. Um, the, the other comment that was brought up is, is, you know, is important information gonna get lost in here? I think one thing to think about with this environmental assessment checklist is the longer the checklist is, there's more potential, the more items we're asking somebody to say, could your development impact this? I think there's a greater chance that they're gonna have to say yes at some point and then potentially have to do an environmental impact report and if somebody checks off ten of these items, you may end up with an environmental impact report that's several hundred pages long. A- and then there's an opportunity there just because of the volume of information you're getting that maybe some critical elements get lost. Um, the point, uh, uh, that I'm trying to make, cause I think it's important to make sure that this environmental assessment checklist really addresses the impacts that are most important to the town and not just, I, I mean, we could ask for a checklist or an assessment of everything under the sun. Um, but I, I think maybe taking a critical eye at, at this list and saying, yes, this addresses all the impacts that we're really concerned about as a town, I think is important, um, so that you don't end up requiring environmental impact reports for, for every project that comes through town and, and also you don't end up with environmental impact reports that are hundreds of pages long, if, if that makes sense.
Next.
All right. Um, so that, yeah, I mean, I think, are there any other questions or comments related to this environmental, uh, preliminary environmental assessment?
Excuse me, Matt?
Yeah.
Um, Amanda has some questions she's had which we've been waiting on and she'd like to do some of them now. Is that okay?
Yeah, we can just go section by section because I think it'll make more sense. Like, so we're in section sixteen, twelve dash twenty. I don't know if anybody else has additional questions on this section, but I sure do.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the first one I had was, um, when we look at, um, sorry, I'm just gonna scroll, scroll down my notes. Um, significantly alter, so it's number three in the um, list of preliminary environmental assessments. So my first, my general question is like, do each of these items underneath um, kind of that preliminary environmental assessment like map to a specific like artifact? Or you alluded that it'd just be a yes, no question, or how's the verification? Or are we just trusting them? I think that was what Jeff was saying. It's like a trust but no verify or trust partial verify, like.
Trustful verify.
Trustful verify, okay. Okay, thank you for that. And then the next is, so, um, for three, it says significantly alter, remove na- native vegetation. So in a lot of the things I feel like we, that's come through our, our, um, some of the current developments that's in progress, like it's definitely altering, but then they already have a plan to re-vegetate? In that scenario, like if they're already discussing re-vegetation, would it still trigger that they would potentially have to go further in another impact? Or should we alter number three so that it's like significantly or significantly and permanently alter and remove native vegetation? Cause it feels like it would be stupid to have them do more studies if they're already planning to re-vegetate it with native.
Um, go ahead, Matt.
Oh, what I was gonna say is, um, I, I think first to your first question, this, that, this list of one through twenty-one. The, the one I'm asking this done is this becomes a checklist that is included with an application. So when somebody comes in for a project, they go through this checklist, they say, they say, yep, my project's gonna impact this or no, it won't. Then the planning director looks that over, so it's not like they just, nobody's checking to make sure that what they're saying is, it really makes sense. So, a- as Scott said, there's a, a full review and, and verification that what the applicant has put in this checklist is uh, it seems correct. And then secondly, um, i- in my mind, if somebody said, yes, my project will significantly alter, remove native vegetation. At that point, then the planning director would say, okay, well, we're gonna need some more information as part of your application that, that explains what your impacts are gonna be and how you're gonna mitigate those. So to your point, if they've already thought of, I'm gonna have a re-vegetation plan for my project, then I, in my mind, that would kinda satisfy and that would be a piece to the environmental impact report of, here's my, here are gonna be my impacts and here's how I'm gonna mitigate those impacts. Does that seem correct, Scott?
Yeah, and I also, I'm writing a note to myself, um, we need to, to define native vegetation because to me this means taking out
Willa.
Native vegetation, either riparian habitat or other things which may not be that easily mitigated or re-vegetated, right? That you can't replace.
It just feels like everyone's gonna check this coming through because if you're doing a new development, everybody has impact.
Yeah.
If we could just reword, or we could look at like a different wording for number three that is more getting to exactly what you're saying. Where it's like, it's, no, it's impossible to say no to that.
But just because you say yes doesn't mean you need a big report either. No, you, you know, like, just cause you say yes doesn't mean you need a hundred page report.
Exactly. Um, so that was.
Would you want to explain it better?
Exactly. Yeah, so that one, um, the, um, next one is, if we could add it. So number six, it says, be in an area of natural hazard or potentially increase the risk of hazards. I would really love us to add fire in this list. So right now the list is rockfall, avalanche, landslide, siltation, settlement, flood or other landform changes. I think we should call out fire, like if you're, if you're going to be. What? Oh, you did too? I did not look at yours. Mine was in here at five thirty-eight P M. Okay, um, yeah, so I would like to add that in.
I would like to ask what siltation is.
It's, uh.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Erase it.
So like if you, um, don't put the proper barriers and like, yeah, yeah. Um, so the other one was, this is, seems super stupid, but like discharge, toxic and thermal. That seems really like specific to those type of nervous senses. We don't have anything with like sonic in there. So that was my other, I don't think we're gonna have anything with Sonic, but it seems like we're leaving that out.
Sonic substances?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if you, we need it or if it even become, but like you never know up here.
What is a sonic substance?
Like so- sonic, like people have like sonic, um, like, have you ever like?
Like, or like a sonic.
Boom, yeah, or sonic noise.
Well, that would get to, um, noises that are harmful to the rights of.
Is it in that? Is it in there? Sonic is, okay, well then leave it out of.
It's not, but I, I, I don't know.
I don't know. Um, then there's one there.
We're here asking questions, so we don't skip.
Yeah, so then I was looking at the eighteen, um, so number eighteen, alter local traffic patterns, increase traffic volumes and or increased demands on public transit. I think like anytime we're referencing some of these, um, specific areas like traffic or wetlands or stuff that we should use the same language, so like I tried to reference back to what we used in PUD and we use a slightly different nuance in the PUD, so we could use just similar language from like the PUD traffic study to this traffic study to, like, just keep that consistent language. So there's no, um, discrepancy. So like in the PUD, which is on like, and, and I'm starting like, so like, we're like talking about like, um, the, you know, increasing of average and peak daily traffic volumes, like that's how we kinda phrase the, the PUD. But if we could also like, so increase to traffic volumes, both peak and daily, but just to make sure that it's consistent language between each of the areas within chapter sixteen that reference traffic.
Okay.
Um.
Well, man, I wanna, I want your, I wanna hear your response to this, but I, you know, I think about this. This particular checklist is, I think intentionally using kinda broad terms so we can exercise some discretion. Um, when you get to a specific land use application type, we're gonna be more specific on peak hours and, and things like that and use some terms. But, um, Matt, what is your thought on that?
So I, I agree, Scott. I think the other aspect of this checklist is it's, um, I, I think the idea is that anybody could come in and fill this out with some level of, um, wi- without having to hire experts to say, well, I don't, you know, what, what do you mean AM and PM peak? Traffic volumes are gonna change. I, I mean, you really have to hire a traffic engineer to figure that out. So I think the checklist is really a first look at, at potential impact from a development and, and these categories are, I guess, sort of dumbed down for lack of a better term, but so that you don't necessarily have to hire technical experts to help you fill out the checklist. Hopefully you can, you can, most people can fill it out on their own with uh, some level of accuracy.
Oh, this, Amanda, what is, I'm gonna ask you, or whoever. Talking about traffic, I understand like potentially like animals and this and that, but this whole section looks to me specifically supposed to be sort of directed towards environmental and traffic studies affect the environment or the locations of the road.
I, I think that's what we were maybe talking about a little earlier, the.
Change in the sections.
Well, the, the way it is crafted now and the way we're carrying it forward is that it is not just aimed at understanding impacts to the environment, but larger environment, including cultural or socioeconomic concerns, things like traffic impacts, you know?
It's a big package.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a long, fairly long list that is.
Information support.
Meant to be sufficiently vague, uh, so we can have this high level assessment of, okay, what's their answer? What's our knowledge of this area? What's our professional opinion of whether we actually agree with them that it will or will not impact traffic or wildlife or whatever? And like Matt was saying, that we can.
So vague is beneficial to us here.
I think, I think, yeah, to be, to be, I don't know if this is helpful, but I feel like, I feel like our intention is that we are trying to craft a question here that casts the biggest net to catch the most fish and get the right yay or nay or maybe answer. Now, specifics, because the more specific to Scott's point that you get, the easier it is for somebody to say no.
Yeah, get around it.
You want the biggest net, right? So we want the, the grade, like the most vague, the most broad question to make sure that you're getting the, the right response, which is yay or nay. And then that's when Scott or Madison looks at the, the answers and says, okay, this is a yay, this is a yay, this is a yay, we got eleven yays on instead of thirty-five questions. Here's the ones we need to drill down on. We're gonna go out to the site, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna see what kind of red flags we see, whether or not the, we're gonna verify the answers and then if there's some no's, if you're standing there and you go, hmm, looks like this is gonna impact a fence. Because they're gonna dig up this, there's a moose standing there as I'm looking at it, and it's eating a bunch of moss that's been there for four hundred years. Says it's not gonna impact this, but he's gonna dig it up and put a, you know, car wash there. I, I think that's what we're getting at. So I, I feel like we're kinda like starting to get into the weeds of like specifics on these questions, and what we really want is, is to determine on the front end what, what more information do we need? If we need some. And it's always on the applicant anyway, it's not on us.
These are basically questions, we're pretty much, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We need questions.
No, I, I have problem with questions.
Matt's trying to get to the, the best que- the best criteria on the front and just even determine whether or not it's a complete application.
Tell us what you have to say, and we'll talk about it.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, Amanda, do you, did you have more?
No.
No, whatever. No.
Go ahead, you got one more?
No.
Okay.
No.
Go ahead, Matt, sorry.
All right, uh, so there's no other comments or questions about the preliminary assessment section? Sixteen, twelve, forty?
No.
All right.
Environmental impact report.
Sixteen, twelve, thirty, um, the environmental impact report. So most of this it mirrors what's in the existing code. Um, the language from the existing code, we, we reorganized and, and slightly tweaked the language uh, to hopefully help this section read better and, and be a little more intuitive. Um, under this first provision, under section A, or subsection A, um, the existing code requires the town to approve any consultants or professionals or personnel, um, hired by the applicant to prepare an environmental impact report on their behalf, which is a little awkward. Um, a- and so we changed this to say, um, I, I mean, the applicant could go out and hire whoever they want, but in the environmental impact report, the qualifications of whoever is involved with preparing the, the report, their qualifications have to be stated. And so that gives the town, uh, the staff, planning commission, and town council an opportunity to look at the qualifications and say, okay, you know, this person seems like they, they're the right person to be looking at wetlands or wildlife habitat, things like that, rather than just uh, you know, hiring somebody off the street and saying, hey, I need you to do a wetlands report for me. Um, so there's, instead of this language that says the town has to approve consultants for the applicant, the applicant can hire whomever they want, but their, the qualifications of those folks have to be spelled out, and then the the town has the opportunity to sort of scrutinize those if necessary.
That is, um, absolutely typical of most other jurisdictions, the way they do it. Uh, and quite frankly, those consultants are kinda few and far between, and they, they are, they show up on most major projects. You know, there's a handful of individuals or firms that do this kinda work. So you kinda know who they are.
Um, subsection B, we, we tweaked the language a bit here. Um, this section really is a guide for an applicant to say, here's a list of the types of studies and data that might need to be pulled together for your environmental impact report. Um, a- and so we tried to clarify it to, to say that this is, you're not gonna be required to do all these, but here's the types of studies that you may need to do, kinda depending on what the, the results of your preliminary assessment are. Uh, and we added in here, uh, under E, uh, site contamination. That, that was a new requirement, or a new type of study that, that we offered as an example to address the, the new item we added to the, the preliminary assessment. So if, if you do have a site that's potentially contaminated, now we're saying you may need to do a, a site contamination study that's equivalent to a phase one environmental site, site assessment, and that's a I, I think a technical, technical person should have a pretty good understanding of what level of detail that, that entails. Um, so that really covers, eh, other than that, there really weren't too many other changes, uh, to this, eh, at least under B. Um, D and D, there, there were eh, not really any changes, again, more just reorganizing the existing code language and, and maybe making some minor modifications to help it read a little bit better. Um, and then jumping all the way down to subsection F. Uh, this is where we added the language that says the, if an environmental impact report is required by the planning director, that needs to be submitted by an applicant before their, their application can be deemed complete. And other than that, um, again, there, there really weren't any other major changes that were made to what's in the code today.
Anybody? Nothing here. Next?
That's it?
That's it?
So.
That's it.
Matt, Amanda? She's saying no, okay.
I guess my concern is that just they're paid professionals by these people that are planning these developments. We can always, like it says on G, plan director may refer an environmental impact report from federal agencies, so we can actually go over, we don't like what this professional's saying because I don't know, we're for the school district, and I see these kids come in with these paid by psychiatrists all the time, and you're like,
That's what this is.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, this is how much they pay this person, there's a way for them to say, you know what I mean? So I mean, it's nice to have that oversight of some other agency that can actually give more pertinent information that is more biased to what the town actually wants.
That would be helpful, especially with the Tanning's point at the far end of town. You need the professionals to answer those questions.
Yeah, I mean,
That's a fact.
You, I hear what you're saying, um, and there is that element on any major development project, um, whether it's traffic studies or environmental impact study, or paying this person to get to a conclusion, right? Um, I would also say that these people, including traffic engineers and, and, uh, professionals that do environmental impact reports and wetland studies are professional and they're accredited and they have a license and they, so their reputation's on the line. Um, but to your point, I, I think that's why we refer things to state agencies and federal agencies that can poke holes in those things, or
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's, you know, that's occurring right now in real time with some of the developments that we're working on. Um, that's how it's supposed to work.
Yes.
Not like, I don't like this person or how they do their reports, so everything they're saying is wrong. It's, I generally agree with them, but they glossed over this. Let's get some more information on this particular aspect of wetland or wildlife impacts or whatever it is. So, yeah.
So, since we're still opening it for comments, so my only comment is that we had added like the financial or fiscal responsibilities in the above section, but it doesn't feel like it's adequately represented in the technical studies and data for report. The only thing that could be kind of fallen would be like the number three technical studies data prepared. It just doesn't feel like we've adequately like covered that nuance, um, or
Got it.
Do you see, and I don't even know what you would show, whether it'd be like depreciated, you know, like impacted, you know, town revenue? Like, I don't know what you would use. So that's why I struggle to even make the comment, cuz I don't know what you would actually you know, require of them to show, but
I think if, if we're calling out hydrologic conditions or atmospheric conditions, we could say, you know, fiscal impact.
Yeah, something. Something, just to make sure that it's clearly like anything that we've linked up at the top as something that we have it covered in this area.
Great comment. Okay. Anything else?
On the environmental?
Okay.
Um, just, just to, uh, get some level of consensus, um, is there general consensus that this article should be changed from being called envi- eh, we change it from environmental impact report to development impact report? Is that
Yes.
The direction we wanna go?
Vote for that.
And, and, and development includes projects.
Yes.
Okay, we take direction. We've got head shaking yes down here, Matt.
Okay, great.
She's counting projects.
I'm not counting projects, I'm counting three. I need hands raised.
Hands raised.
Thumbs up, okay.
Sorry.
We have a direction. Okay, thank you.
We need democracy as a wonderful thing.
I could do a lot with a beeper, Michael.
Shut my mic off.
We're thinking like a shock collar.
I probably would hurt either.
Okay, so just to be clear, under number one, ensure that complete information on the environmental effects of any proposed development, project, development or project?
No.
What?
No.
Projects, projects slash de- comma developments.
I, oh, we, I thought we were adding projects into the development definition.
Development definition covers what projects would cover. Why, why should we have two different definitions of the same thing?
Include project, the project word in the development definition. I don't understand why we're adding projects.
Okay.
Commanding the definition, like you're talking about. Supposedly it's there.
It's redone.
Right, what, what is, what is so special about the word projects?
I have no idea. And, and we're sitting here, people are yelling. Do you remember when we talked about this?
Just from like Google? Yeah, just please, let's see what, how it sounds, if there's any difference for everybody's.
Can I do you one better and bring up an actual planner's dictionary?
Sure.
Lynn, as for clarity, what did you all come up with?
On this project?
Yes, what's the?
Solving that, he's looking up the definition of project to see if it covers development, if it's the same thing.
Okay.
I mean, we're using projects already partially in the document.
I don't know that we need to add project, but I'm, I'm willing to entertain this.
Well, we, we use it underneath submittal requirements. Lynn using other subdivision, subdivision application for their project, should say for their development.
Okay. Okay, so from the American Planning Association Planner's Dictionary, which takes definitions from different jurisdictions all over the country, a project, also see development project. A particular development on an identifiable parcel of land. Boise, Idaho.
And what does it say the definition of project is?
That is the definition of project.
That's a development project.
That's the definition of the project?
Development standards, development proposal.
All projects are in development.
Development project. A public or private sector venture involving the development, structural modification, or redevelopment of a commercial, industrial, residential, or other properties, Thornton, Colorado. Uh, a project in which one or more lots, tracts, or parcels of land are to be developed or redeveloped as a coordinated site for a complex of uses, units, or structures, including but not limited to plan, plan developments and/or cluster developments for residential, commercial, institutional, recreational, open space, or mixed uses.
Instead of project, right?
That's the development project.
Development, uh,
I don't know.
Madison has a project going on, creating her knitting quilt.
Yes, that's not going to be in zoning code.
Uh, so what's our current definition of development?
It's development or project is in the definitions.
I was gonna keep it the same.
Yep.
Yeah.
So are we gonna, every time we see, have the word project in the article, we're gonna say development or project?
No.
Or we're just gonna use them interchangeably?
I think we're good.
I mean, it's pretty common, like, I just don't feel like we're like liable for something because we don't specify.
Whether it's project or development.
Development means any man-made change to improved or unimproved real estate, including but not limited to construction, demolition, renovation, rehabilitation, mining, dredging, filling, grading, paving, excavation, or drilling operations.
Pretty, pretty wide.
Extremely encompassing definition of development.
Exactly. Development, where, so the develop is just a general term.
It is just a general.
Pretty much covers any change that you wanna make to your property.
Yes.
Okay, how about that?
Then we're, we parent application.
Work that out?
Yes.
So we're going with development.
Okay. And this section's gonna be called development impacts?
Yes.
Versus environmental.
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Okay.
Can I, hey, hey, excuse me, manager? Could, could I have a question, uh, for Scott on this next one? That way I don't waste a lot of time here.
No, we're not there yet.
We're not there yet?
No, we're not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, horses.
Scott is going through and summarizing all the direction we've gotten on articles.
Um,
All right.
Uh, Matt, unless you have something else, I
I, I don't, I was gonna ask, you guys still need me?
You hope not.
You hope not, crossing your fingers.
Can you find a knitting project?
I, I have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, that fits under socio-economical or cu- or, uh, cultural.
Yeah, probably maintains culture.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you all. Good night.
I've got another question.
How do you feel, Scott?
It'll save us a lot of time.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
The, I can get to this under actually planning department update, so I'll wait. Just what's coming next in our scan, the code update.
The only reason I wanted to ask this question is because obviously I missed this part of the page on page seventeen, where Scott said, eh, question, whether he even putting this in here? So, uh, on seventeen, it talks about that this section was requested.
Yes.
But apparently, if we're not discussing it, it saves me about a hundred post-its.
Yes.
So if it's just in here for our own general interest and we're not talking about tonight,
Yes.
then
Wait, wait, I have something on the above.
I have some question.
Above section. How, how much evidence do you need tonight? There's only two places, but there's two things.
How much what?
We're not talking about.
We're finishing.
So we're not talking about definitely. The words are run together, so you don't know exactly what they mean.
No, we're not talking about it.
In the title.
Now you'll have months to interpret.
Yes, we'll go back, okay.
We're, just as a reminder, we
One says, and, and pharmacies is mushed together and our structures mushed together.
We're not talking about that.
We're not talking about that.
Um, the only thing I will say about this is, um, Madison's correct, this was requested. Um, so here you go. Um, two things. We spent a lot of time four years ago going through our existing definitions, uh, adding to them, rewriting other definitions. We spent an entire meeting or two talking about building height calculations and how the town might wanna change, how it calculates building height in the future. And then the whole project got put on a shelf. So we've done a lot of work. This is good for you to read through our existing definitions, so when we re, re, when we dust this stuff off and re-present it to you, um, that's gonna be at the end of this project, because once we get through all the different sections of the code, we're probably gonna have another list of additional definitions that we might wanna add or change these definitions, just based on our work on all the different sections of the code. And that'll be a final kind of cleanup action, uh, to make sure we've thought of everything and we're defining it properly, and it, and it supports the, the regulations that we're actually writing. So that's it. I just wanted to let you know that that's coming much later.
Thought I had a lot of, and I saw all that stuff somewhere.
I mean, I hesitate to put out the draft that we had from a few years ago or four years ago of, you know, potential changes to this. I, I just don't wanna confuse things at this point. I think we need to stay focused on getting through these other sections of the code.
But keep all these, once you have your post-its, where's when you can talk.
That's right.
I already got this whole damn thing.
You've been in?
Already. I'm sorry. Thank you though, Scott, I, I missed that section, I thought this was, that was all something to get into, I was like, why, what's gonna be short me?
No, if, once we get into definitions, we'll provide dinner for you guys.
Dinner?
It's gonna be dinner.
What's next?
Put right that down.
Uh, I think you have.
I have one question. You didn't ask.
I'm the one. I didn't, because I'm a shut-off and I said something, but go ahead.
No, you go.
No, I'm okay.
So I, mine is just a question on like, so if there's mitigating measures for like to minimize impacts, would those just be given to us in like a staff report, because it's approved by the director, the planning director? Like, so you approve, somebody has impacts, it says that there would be mitigating measures proposed. Would you like approve them and then they would just go in staff report, or would those mitigating measures have to come in front of commission?
Those would go in front of commission, and I think Matt touched on this. How it should work is if the initial checklist says we're gonna have impacts on fifteen out of twenty-one different items, or some other item. And we direct the applicant to produce an environmental impact report by a professional. The environmental impact report will acknowledge the impacts that they're gonna have and propose mitigation. So if it's environmental impact report that spans wildlife and wetlands and traffic and visual impacts, if they're cutting down a hillside or something like that, like, their plan provided, produced by a professional will detail the extent of their impact and their proposed mitigation. And then that will go to state and federal referral agencies, the town engineer, whoever else wants to look at it. By the time you get to it, it'll be reviewed by at least, you know, two or three different bodies. But there, the, the answer is it'll be in their environmental impact report and any plan and mitigation. Does that make sense?
It, it does, maybe just reread that section to make sure that that is acknowledged, that process, because it doesn't feel like it's fully.
Which?
Yeah, so it'd be, it's underneath D, required contents. And then it is underneath section, the next section D, announces that assesses each of the following in reasonable detail. But then it goes into additional requirements and submittal requirements where it just doesn't really clearly articulate that.
So D two.
Process that you just described.
D two says mitigating measures, minimize impacts from a proposed development?
Yeah.
I think that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, but then it goes down to, it, it looks, it reads that it's like the planning director that actually. I'm trying to, it doesn't really, I'm reading that required content section again, it just doesn't read like that it would come to planning commissioner or council.
So that's, that to me says that, you know, the planning director is going to dictate the actual format of the report.
Okay.
How it's gonna look, how it. Yeah, the manner in which the report shall be prepared. The submission of additional information, if we.
Just, if you could read through, I just don't see where it articulates, like, the communication or, or acknowledgement of those.
So under G two review, it says as part of the review process required for land use or subdivision application, announce staff, the planning commission, and the town council as applicable to review an environmental and impact report. And consider the comments and or recommendations provided by any agencies, entities, and or professionals that the environmental impact report is referred to by the planning director. So I believe that states that planning commission council and town staff will all be reviewing this.
Is that, is that the concern?
That's in the G section, yes.
The very last paragraph.
Yeah.
Is that your concern, though?
I think so, I think that would, I think. I'll read right through the next iteration, but yeah, I think so. Thank you, Madison.
So that's the end of it tonight, is what you're saying?
So I hear.
I think you have questions.
Well, I mean, if. Do you remember we were talking one night about mulch? And there was something said about not using, somebody's saying that they're probably gonna quit using wood.
Mm-hmm.
It's stated in here, but if that's something we can deal with down the line, that's something too.
In the definition?
No, it's on page forty-nine. That's what I'm saying, I mean, we're done with the definitions, but it kind of flows into chapter sixteen, are we continuing on?
Right, but page forty-nine of the packet is in the definition section.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, okay. So, it, yes, it says.
That's.
That's the definition of what mulch is?
So you, and when you, you were grabbing definitions.
Sixteen, seventeen, one fifty, C. But not limited to wood, bark, nuggets, nutshells, are we gonna clarify some of that when we come up to it?
So that's, I'm not sure why we have that here with the definitions, other than it's the landscaping standards?
Water efficiency landscaping standards, right.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, you know, when we get into that section of the code, if we want to revisit landscaping standards to deal with wildfire and defensible space and materials, absolutely.
I just remembered that was being talked about, how they're probably gonna eliminate wood mulch, so might be something we need to do in here before we close it out. And then we have nicely presentations of what is done, and I guess the fence is up already.
Fence is up already, or partially, I don't know, I haven't seen it today. But they were putting the posts in yesterday when I left.
I don't think they have a lot of people sitting on their lawn. I think, I would think they had a lot of people sitting on their lawns.
They had a lot of people parking their bikes on their lawn and tying their dogs to that fence, or that pole post thing that's right in front of their house. Yes, I think they were sick of it.
It looks nice.
So if I had read the packet before yesterday when I drove out of town, I wouldn't have called you and said, do they have a permit?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, it's.
I exposed myself.
That's what Mr. Drayton, that's at my store, when the market was there, all the vendors tied their dogs to the fence and hung the coats on it, and that's how those tips got broken over the years. Okay. Planning, planning update. That's a manager's report, does anybody have anything to say on the manager's report? No?
No.
Okay, planning department update, that's where you said you could put something into.
Yeah, so Matt has put together a timeline of the modules that we're working through, and then broken that down into a draft calendar for each month, so we've got ourselves kind of, we've got ourselves booked through July of next year. We really started thinking about how long this is taking and how long it's going to take. You know, Michelle has a directive from council, and I think there's an expectation that we were gonna try to finish this by the end of the year. I think we have four meetings left before the end of the year, counting, you know, the holidays that we're gonna probably not meet and things like that. There's no reality to that, so what we did was put together a realistic timeframe of how we're gonna move through these sections with an adoption deadline of like June or July of next year. So, I think, I can share this at some point with the planning commission, I think it's.
It goes in the council.
Yeah, yeah, so this will be in council's packet for their meeting next week, just to bring them up to speed on what we've accomplished and how much work we still have to do. We can get you the same information, though.
It's probably important if we're gonna crack the website, so we'll just stay tuned.
Yeah.
No, we're very good.
Yep.
Well, and it's important for people to see when those meetings are, if you're gonna be out of town or something, if it makes a difference, if you can zoom in.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of thing.
So we'll, we'll try to take this also and, and update the website, so it's a little more current on where we are in the process and what's coming next. So there's some accountability in here, so we can keep ourselves on track.
Yeah, we don't wanna get bought in.
Ourselves, I mean staff, not necessarily you.
No, us too.
You're doing a great job.
Walking down to the meeting and I was suddenly start pushing. We get a hundred fifty pages on Friday, man, Wendy comes up quick.
Yeah, right.
What you gotta do, those definitions you can't talk about.
Anything else?
I have a question, so on that calendar, have you vetted up to projecting any proposed applications that are coming in? I just wanna make sure that we're balancing the efforts.
That's, I don't know that this necessarily takes that into account.
Okay, yeah, that's not.
Yeah. You know, I would hope that for our purposes, we have, I was gonna talk about that next, just what we're working our way through as a staff in reviewing applications that are live. So you know what's coming your way. But I don't anticipate those taking multiple meetings with the planning commission, so hopefully that won't slow us down too much. So we have been working on midtown village PUD preliminary plan for months and months and months, and we have a very patient and diligent applicant who's been working with us to get us all.
Did you say years? Did you say years?
Years.
And he said patient.
Yeah.
I think was the exact word.
Over a year?
Yes.
So we, staff has, has finally gotten to the point where we feel like we have the information in the way that we wanna present it that makes the most sense, and that we vetted all the different aspects of the application with our referral agencies, and we are going to be scheduling that for a hearing. Do we have any idea when that?
The first meeting in November.
Okay, so that, that's coming your way. So we'll be looking at that, I'm excited, I'm sure the applicant is as well. Eagle County School District, Mulley Park, preliminary plat for subdivision, we've been also reviewing that application since December of last year. It's gone through multiple rounds of completeness review. We've gone through a couple different rounds of referral review on that application. Feels like two. But that also is in referral right now. So hopefully we'll have referral responses back, all of them by next week. That doesn't mean that the application's gonna be ready for a hearing, but most likely, I'm thinking that we might look at a hearing in December or January for that.
Are we gonna get briefed by Michael or Richard on what we can and can't do?
Based on that?
Yeah, I think there, there could be a nice overview of twenty-eleven annexation agreement and, you know, that's good context.
What are jurisdictions?
It's still the same as it always is. It's interesting, because it's a school district, they, they could very well have come to us and said, we're gonna come through a location and extent process, which is, it's a review by the planning commission based on conformance with the comprehensive plan. And that's about it. You could provide comments to them about whether you like or don't like their subdivision, or their design, or whether it's gonna impact wildlife or anything else, and they could have said, thank you very much, but we're gonna go ahead and do it anyways, because they're a public agency. That's an oversimplification. But they chose to follow the normal major subdivision process and give us things like traffic impact studies and wildlife impact studies and the whole ball of wax. And there's some really complex aspects of that because of the twenty-eleven agreement, annexation, water rights, all that stuff, and that's one of the things that has taken so long. Is that applicant's water attorney working with our water attorney to get to some points of agreement on SFEs and things like that, I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but those are the types of things that we've been spending a lot of time on, so. That one's coming your way, probably maybe before the end of the year, maybe not, but. Anything else I'm missing as far as major? In addition to chapter sixteen, we are working with Michelle and Mike on what process we're gonna follow to start identifying potential town uses of town-owned property in Bolts Lake, the properties that we've now acquired. Same goes for track C in Mintern North Development. How those play out as far as which priority, I think the priority right now is on Bolts Lake. There's some urgency around looking at the Highlands parcel in particular, because that probably holds the highest amount of land value. The town kinda needs some money to build a water treatment plant, so we're, we're talking with Eagle Valley Land Trust about potential conservation easements and buyers for those conservation easements, and if we need to go through a process to zone that parcel and maybe subdivide it in order to get to a conservation easement value for that parcel. Again, pretty complex, but those are some of the other things that we're working on. I have been participating in the regional housing action, action plan group, so led by Eagle County and Town of Avon, they hired economic planning systems, that's the group that helped us with our community plan, the economic fiscal impact type stuff and build out analysis for our community plan. And a group called RRC, they specialize in housing plans and housing, affordable housing analysis all over the state. They have been working with each of the towns that were all participating, I think there's a representative from Edwards Metro District. And part of the exercise is to update the county's housing needs analysis, they do that about every three to four years or four to five years, just to keep up on that number, whether it's six thousand housing, housing units that were, you know, in need of, or, you know, I think five years ago it was forty-five hundred, right? But also to start putting some real numbers and, and analysis towards if we were to form a regional housing authority, like the regional transportation authority or transit authority, what that would look like and how that would impact or affect different towns that might have different ability to receive housing, things like that. So it's, it's really a good way to start the conversation. And in that spirit, the group has now produced kind of the, the final, not final report, but the, the draft report from all of our work, they're gonna start rolling that out to the towns this month. So we'll, I think they're gonna come before town council on November sixth and do an initial presentation to say, here's all the analysis that has been done, and here's the relevant data. November sixth, I think, is the council meeting. So, I think that, that's it, we're also participating in the Wildland Urban Interface Code Planning Group, which is made up mostly of fire officials, fire marshals, fire chief, different jurisdictions, the towns, looking at what it would look like to adopt some standard wildland interface elements into our different codes or things like that, so.
Is that timing gonna coincide with getting it into our code?
It probably, I think we might get to the point where we have that enough information that we could start kind of making choices on what we want to include and what we might not.
Pretty good.
So, it kind of started off as maybe, do we adopt kind of a one-size-fits-all and get all the jurisdictions to adopt the same thing? And we quickly got to the point where there's so much variation, staff capacity, geography, you know, it just didn't necessarily make sense to apply a one-size-fits-all wildland interface code for everybody. So it might be a little bit more à la carte, based on information, best practices, you folks make your best decision for your town, kind of thing, so. Anything else? Okay, that's all I have. Never a dull moment in our lives.
Planning commission comments, I have one small one, for any of you who know Oliver Natwell. Ninety-eight birthday is October seventeenth.
Hello.
So, yeah, so, might be nice to drop a card in the mail, or if you see her on the street, wish her happy birthday.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight?
Other than that, does anybody else have anything? No? October twenty-third, everybody here? Anybody gone? Not over there, well, no. November thir- well, November thirteenth, is that the first meeting? Yeah, prior, yeah, yeah, anybody? November twenty-seventh, the day before Thanksgiving.
Jeez, I don't have that meeting, I'll be here.
Yeah, that's why it's on here, to hopefully get you all to decide not to have that meeting.
Yeah, can we both decide not to have that meeting?
I would say it would be dependent on whether we have more consistency.
Yeah, and you may talk about some other things too.
Jeff's here? Yes? I'm here, Amanda's here, Eric?
Next week, yeah?
No, no, after Thanksgiving.
The the twenty-seventh?
Twenty, well, twenty-seven.
For Thanksgiving.
I'm having knee operation the twenty-fifth, so I don't think I'd be very.
You'll be here, so there would be three of us.
I'll be here.
You'll be here, that's four of us, that's a quorum.
I don't wanna be here, but.
Peer pressure, Mike, peer pressure.
Alright, so our chapter sixteen calendar says. That it's Thanksgiving Day, and the day before is a PC meeting to review draft number one of Article Eight, which is our subdivision.
Perfect.
So, yeah, not a fan of that, but.
I'll bring some pumpkin pie. You're on it, I'll bring the whipped cream, okay, done, great.
Maybe it takes two meetings.
So at this point, yes, we will be having a meeting.
I'm just telling you right now, we're canceling the Christmas meeting, cause it's on Christmas.
Gee, thank you.
We will not be, staff will not be here.
I know, it's on Christmas this year.
I will be here.
Christmas is on Wednesday.
Can we reschedule to the Tuesday before?
No.
Christmas Eve?
Yes.
Maybe we have a join meeting.
Council meeting, no.
Oh, that's council, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're already canceling that meeting.
Are we ready to move to adjourn?
I'm waiting for a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
A second.
Motion to adjourn the meeting of October ninth, twenty-twenty-four, and I have a roll call of those, please.
Aye.
Aye.